Me?
No, no, I said they were waiting on.
No. But just in case, shush. I don't want to test that theory. Yes, it is live now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait a few more minutes.
All right, take.
People at home.
Drive the feeling.
Uh-huh. Be careful.
I can't promise that. I do not like to keep with the traffic, I like to be the leader of the traffic.
Oh. I went to a Hazel District Training and Denton. And Terry Shiflett was the driver. We were all, because in the back, just like hanging on. It was the scariest thing.
He knew my drive.
Thirty percent.
But he was fine till we got to the city, and then it was just near collision after near collision.
Sorry about that.
He said he didn't see where we were.
All right. I'll see y'all.
Good morning.
About heart of a care.
Are we going in designer jeans? Are we going from the...
These are some of the factory outlet jeans to work in. They just got fancy pockets.
Ah, I think they're designer jeans. Uh, she's here, yeah. She was, she was here.
But, uh, yeah, designer. Does that look good?
You look very good. You're very, very stylish.
Skinny jeans don't work for me, buddy. I'm a little bit thick.
Husky.
Husky.
Like your skinny legs.
Got him kiltie legs.
We're Monday, eh?
We have clerk?
Yes.
We have clerk?
What is y'all's official house name?
I don't know.
Are these people the hogger to come in?
I don't know, but we will call to order the meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court. Let the record show, it is nine thirty A.M. sharp. All members of the court are present. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel. And if you'd like to call in and make a comment, please feel welcome to call in at nine four zero two two one two one zero seven. If you're able, please stand for our invocation. Commissioner Scott Shook has the honor.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, just thank you for another beautiful day in Young County. Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come and serve. Father, we just pray that decisions we make here today are glorified and pleasing to you, Father. And we just pray for the decisions we need to make today, Father. Lord, we just thank you for the rain, thank you for being able to come. And, uh, Lord, we just praise you and thank you for all that you do. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
...... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, proudly with the seat of the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, we'll start with public comments. Is there anyone here for our public comments today? Zach, one public comment I have for you is that I will get you the, um, the thing we did last time.
Resolution.
Resolution. I'm going to make a note.
Thank you.
All right.
Someone wants to announce their vote?
Please.
Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service is doing their Texas Communities Futures Forum. This comes Monday, April twenty ninth at six o'clock P.M. at NCTC. And that is our annual, we generally do it every five, six years, where we gather community stakeholders in a room. We talk about the various issues that we face here in Young County across all communities in the areas of agricultural resources, family and community health, leadership, economic development, as well as 4-H and youth. And so we go together, we identify those issues, and we prioritize those issues. So we invite any community member that's interested, six P.M. next Monday at NCTC, to come and participate in that effort. As it's a community event, it only identifies issues that are, we can use for an extension for programming, and then issues that we can't deal with and that are in our program area, we make sure to send those to the correct organizations, companies, and so forth with their word as well.
Okay, so this meeting is next Monday at NCTC at six P.M. All right, hopefully, hopefully people will come. Yes, please.
Morning, I have a public comment.
Please.
My name is Daisy Creel, and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees from Newcastle. And I'm also a community member there and a mama of children from our school. And I just wanted to express appreciation for Officer Joe's role in our school over the last several months and just make it, make it known publicly how much he's appreciated and how, um, how it's a different dynamic for our children whenever there is a presence of law enforcement, law enforcement.
Wonderful, so that's Joe Siskar, and he's, he's been helping you guys out quite a bit.
And we would, we would love any opportunity for him to be back there.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comments? That's kind of nice to have public comments.
Well, we've got Run for the Children coming up this weekend, and we've got, uh, Build the Park for the Life Jackets and all that coming up.
Oh, the, uh, White, Remember White Day? That's this weekend?
That's this weekend coming up, so there's several other things going on.
All right, that's wonderful. The most public comments we've ever had. Anyone more? Keep it on a roll. Any more public comments? All right, we will move on to receipt of hotel occupancy tax, our hot tax report. We received three hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents for March two thousand and twenty-four from La Casa Tierra. What is, what's the parking lot issue? It sounds like a note that I put down there and I've forgotten what it is.
Hey.
No?
Remember parking lot issue? What's that?
Oh! All right, we've been having a problem with people parking in the, um, in the sheriff's office, two parking spots. And we're running court pretty much five days a week up here. We've got two district courts with, uh, Bristow as the visiting judge, Gregory running his court. Uh, we've run a court in, we're running this court here on Wednesdays. We've been having a lot of family law court. So we're, we're pretty much having court Monday through Friday. And, um, the, we've had multiple times where the jail has been pulling up and there's not a spot for them to, uh, bring in, uh, bring in their tenants. So this is just a public announcement to, um, please observe the sheriff's two parking spots on the south side of courthouse.
We're having a Chalupa Lunch happening.
Oh, we're having a Chalupa Lunch, uh, this Friday, right?
Thursday.
This Thursday? This Thursday to support the Graham Hospital, and that's always really good on courthouse lawn.
You're welcome.
I also know that they're having a big Cinco de Mayo festival. Um, I think they're having it on Cuatro de Mayo, which is a Saturday. The Cinco de Mayo is on a Sunday, but, um, um, they're, the Graham Downtown Business Association is going to have a huge, uh, a huge Cinco de Mayo celebration that weekend. All right, this is going to be the highlight of the meeting. We have the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Volunteer Week Proclamation Signing. The proposed proclamation is, this is for Volunteer Week. Whereas volunteering of one's time and resources is a fundamental part of our, of our country's tradition and is essential to its spirit. And whereas it is increasingly more evident that our nation's greatest resource is its people. And whereas volunteers have shown that they truly care and show generously of themselves. And whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as a central partner with government, education, and industry in doing the work of our nation. And whereas volunteers within the Young County AgroLife Extension Service and 4-H program enable both youth and adults of Young County to more fully develop and utilize their life skills, effectively use their resources, and more fully extend the knowledge of the university to the people. And whereas volunteerism directly reflects the democratic principles upon which this nation was founded, in that everyone, regardless of circumstance, position, or other factors, can volunteer. And whereas we are seeking even more contributions of human resources and volunteerism and better application of these valuable contrib- contributions. Therefore, we wish to honor and to thank the dedicated 4-H and extension volunteers of Young County who give so freely of their valuable time, energy, and abilities by proclaiming this week of April twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to be officially designated as National Volunteer Week in Young County. And in doing so, I call all citizens of Young County to help renew and sustain the spirit and vitality of this great nation by committing a portion of their time to address the needs of their communities through voluntary action. We have a motion to accept this proclamation. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously accept it. Let's sign this sucker up and let's get some pictures. That's great. See, volunteerism is, is so important. I'm, I'm glad y'all have a lot of great volunteers.
We can always use more volunteers. We have a lot of great ones, but we can always use more.
Come on up. We're gonna, let's see.
Well, we could do a little quick confirmation. There's a couple of things that will inform you about what's up.
Okay, well, good. We'll sign, get this signed up while we're...
So for your reflection, we did give it April and it's being National Volunteer Month, and let us recognize and honor the inwaving dedication of our volunteers in here in Young County. So first, we're going to start at the far end with Carly. She's going to let you know her name, what club she's with, and then she's got some, um, committee information or volunteer information for you to share.
My name's Carly Dawson. I'm from 4-H. An interim volunteer here. Ninety-eight volunteers, five hours. Leadership Advisory Board, eight volunteers in six hours. FCH Program Area Task Forces and Coalition, seven volunteers in eight hours. And random episodic volunteers, we have thirty volunteers.
Hi, my name is Addison Greenwood, and I'm from Salt Fork, 4-H. And there is 4-H District Adult Volunteers, twenty-eight, and 4-H District Youth Volunteers, there's ten. Um, there are lots of volunteers in the program, and we want to make sure they all know how much we, we are loved and appreciated. Help us celebrate National Volunteer Month by giving them a shout-out today.
My name is Jessica Cox, and I'm from New Bridge, and I'm here to share how volunteers serve their county and influence their communities to live more healthy and lifelong. Volunteer impact in two thousand and twenty-three, total three thousand and ninety-nine hours, very positive.
My name is Jordan Creel, and I'm from Salt Fork, 4-H. FCH Program Area Committee, eight. FCH Program Area Task Forces and Coalition, Coalition.
Coalition.
Coalition, seven. National Volunteer Month is wrapping up soon, but every day we are thankful for our Texas Master Wellness Volunteers. If you are interested in joining our awesome volunteers, learn more about us by calling the dispatching office.
My name is Lexi Miller, and I'm from Salt Fork, three. Ag and in our program area, Task Forces and Coalition, twenty-five volunteers. Community and Economic Development Committees, six volunteers. County Care, County Care and Volunteer Leader Association, six volunteers. April is National Volunteer Month. We want to take time to thank our Texas Master Wellness Volunteers and the impact they have in our communities every day. Let us know why you are thankful for them in the comments.
Hi, my name is Trey Creel. I'm in the sixth grade and from Salt Fork, 4-H. There are seventeen volunteers in the 4-H Lifestyle Volunteers or 4-H Lifestyle Show Board. There are eight men, eight volunteers for the 4-H Task Forces and Project Committees. There's eight volunteers for Ag and in our program area committees. In the community, on the work side of campuses, and anywhere else they are needed, our volunteers selflessly dedicate themselves to helping Texans stay healthy. Thank you, volunteers.
All right, I'm Cooper Pittcock, and I'm from Renew, 4-H. And for the adult demonstration, the cooperators, there's four volunteers. And for the Youth Program Area Committee, there's mine, Mark.
My name's Cooper Pittcock. I'm from Renew, 4-H. And, and we appreciate our volunteers in the Texas AgroLife Extension Program and their integral role in the health of everyday Texans. Thank you for all you do and your selfless service in your communities.
So here in Young County, we have a wide variety. Oftentimes, we just think about our 4-H volunteers, and there's such a huge role there because they're primarily working with our youth. There's programming in the community that they are part of as well, in addition to all of our extension committees, coalitions, task force, and show board members and so forth. And so, um, just to highlight, our 4-H, we have our club managers, we have project leaders, we have coaches. And we have the volunteers at some of those committees help make this decision on, um, how we go about planning projects, how we plan activities throughout the year, um, funding, things like that. So, uh, it's a vast, large group. In fact, a lot of our role is volunteer management, um, because though we don't have employees, uh, they work tirelessly, uh, for the programs that we deal with within extension, and of course, all the things we do in our 4-H program especially. And that being said, um, we said we had a total of three thousand ninety-nine hours with the volunteers. And at thirty-one dollars and maybe cents an hour is the volunteer rate in Texas. Um, we are contributing ninety-eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents back into the county. And so in addition to the proclamation, our, um, County Council Kids elected to mention with a check in regards to the volunteer contribution, the economic impact that they made during the two thousand and twenty-three year. So we'd like to be voted into that as well.
Absolutely. Why don't we, we'll all come up there so we don't have the table and we can get better pictures.
Hey, let's get a picture of him.
Well, we're gonna put you back.
And we have volunteer and volunteer parents. We're still, I'll tell you, too many in the photos. We have the MC, uh, Creel, Salt Fork, 4-H manager. We have Abby Pittcock, our Renew manager. And then you have Andrew, who are the parent volunteers.
How are you doing? I'm good. How are you? Why don't y'all come back here? Hi, how are you? Oh, come on, behind us. Come back here. We'll all get a picture. Let's see. All right, who wants to hold the proclamation?
We'll do the proclamation first, and then we'll do the volunteer check later. Awesome, and then if we don't, let's do a separate one.
Money one.
Three, you, and a couple of different things. Awesome, thank y'all so much, Commissioner Shook, for having us this morning.
Is it good?
Thank you.
Kyle, can you, can you deposit that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of big. It's a big chat. I see you every day from where I'm here now. I see you every day.
Well, I've just started. Start. Thank you so much.
You enough volunteers yet for the high school? If you don't, there's several more. Since you done signed me up. Are you voting? Yeah, I gotta go do the high school bill.
And I think, I think, I think we're getting ripped off at quarter one bucks an hour. All right, let's move to item number four. Consider the county clerk meetings from the previous meeting, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. Any comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report and update on securities pledge. Treasurer Mollum?
Okay, email, uh, please be a copy of the report this, uh, November reconciliation still moving forward.
Let everybody line it up, can you get?
No. Yeah, now we're in the middle.
So we're, we're, we are, we are through the time before you started.
Yes.
Well, good, so it's probably going to move a little faster now.
It has, and, and I'm going to ask her to come in hopefully the rest of this week. And like I said, we have December. There's just one thing we're trying to balance up.
Yeah.
And I think they're moving along.
That's exciting.
We approve that, and also.
Yeah.
Go ahead, but I'll be for signatures.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rogers. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
And we also have donations from, uh, to the Young County Historical Commission, a total of fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents on sale of merchandise.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion to accept that donation?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner, Commissioner Rogers. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Kyle. Now we'll move to item number six, the auditors budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Robbins?
All of us have vouchers payable. Not much to bet today. Total today is two hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-sixty-two. And out of the general fund is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, there were a couple of, most of them are smaller bills that just add up. We did give juvenile probation their second half of their annual. We gave them sixty-eight thousand, seven fifty-two. And then there was Zach Burke at Rock Tickets. It was thirty-two thousand three hundred.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the amendments and vouchers payable. We'll move. Motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second since Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Cheryl. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider employee bonds. We have Tommy Ditarm with the Young Stevens County Community Supervision and Corrections Department for five thousand dollars. Erica Jimenez with the county attorney for five thousand dollars. Harley Moore with nine-one-one mapping, uh, five thousand dollars. And Amber Hammond, Fort Belknap ca- caretaker, five thousand dollars.
Hello.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley to accept these one, two, three, four bonds. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, item number eight, we have a contingency from Newcastle here. To discuss, consider helping Newcastle with a bridge on Quanah Street. Mayor Onzie, how are you?
Doing well. How are you, Your Honor?
Yeah, I'm great. Is it, are you not running again? Is that correct?
No, sir, I've done, uh, I've been on council since two thousand and fifteen, so, uh, I've put some time in and it's time.
Put a lot of time. Well, thank you. I appreciate what you've done for all of, for Newcastle. That's been awesome.
I thank y'all. Um, so today we come before y'all, um, we brought along, um, I'm sorry, my, my mind went one of them names. Zach, Zach from the state of Texas. So we've got a bridge on Quanah Street, north of town, uh, northwest of town there that we've had some issues with in the past since I've been there. Um, we did, I believe our commissioner here had done some work on it, helped us out and repaired it some to get by. But it's becoming a hazard again. And Zach has, uh, our secretary had reached out to Zach to see what we can do as far as maybe getting some help on it, the material handling, or even employment as far as to help, uh, put in a new bridge there. But we're looking, we would like to look into trying to make that bridge a state bridge, basically, where they can...
Is it a county bridge right now? Or is it a city bridge?
It's city bridge right now. But, uh, we've had an interlocal agreement in the, in the past, you know, where Stacy's allowed to, allowed us to have some help to maintain our roads and whatnot. He's helped us out for the past few years, doing well, continuing that project for us. But it's becoming a, a major problem. And I know that he's kind of stepped away from it because he's got some family that lives on that street. And it's basically, they're basically the main ones that go in and out of there a lot, more than anybody. So I can understand the conflict of interest in theirs, you know, because people like to point fingers and blame other things. But this is, it's becoming an issue now that where we feel like with the drainage and everything that it's time that we try to expand it or take, do something different. Um, with our budget, we, we can't afford all of it, the manpower, the excavator, the material. Um, I know right now we've got two six-foot tin horns in there, I believe, right now, with oversized, um, but the corrosion, uh, we're not the corrosion, but the runoff and the erosion of it, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's deteriorating already.
So, uh, maybe going, making a state bridge is the answer, but is, are there any grants out there that if we could write a grant to get funding for it? And the reason I bring that up is the court hired a grant writer, and Newcastle is small enough that, that you would fall under the county as far as what the ground out. Grant writer would consider y'all a part of the county. Okay. And so if there, if you knew of a grant, I have a grant writer that can help us write a grant.
I don't know of one at the moment. Um, I do know that the state has a program as well that they're able to offer donations. Like, I think we still pay a certain percentage back, or we pay so much back to them, whether it's payments or something of that nature, um, as far as to be able to purchase the material and things. Now, I, we were just kind of, if we could hit that route and be able to get that donation and us be able to pay that back and over time, we would like to do that if we could, if we're able to find the manpower and the excavation of it. Uh, and that's what we want, that's kind of what we're here for.
So you're asking to see if we could, we could provide the manpower and the excavator to, to help you guys?
Yes, sir.
With your contribution to the grant for the, become a state island, or state bridge?
So the, the program that, that we've talked about is the same one that we use all the time. That's the county assistance program. It's, uh, specifically designed to offer surplus materials to, to counties and municipalities, uh, to assist them with whatever they need on the roadways. We can, that doesn't, it's not exclusive to just roads. That same program is, is available for, for drainage structures, uh, even big ones like this one is. And, and when he says state bridge, I don't know, I don't want to go in circles, but I'll just say this. So, so downstream of this particular city street bridge is, is a bridge under FM nine twenty-six that has two big ten-by-nine barrels. So, so think ten by nine, that's ninety times two, that's a hundred and eighty square feet. Two sixty-inch, uh, or, or two six-foot culvert barrels, that's less than sixty square feet. So it's, it's undersized, so we need to, we need to replace that thing. It needs to be replaced with a larger... So, it's, it's undersized, so we need to, we need to replace that thing. It needs to be replaced with a larger, a larger structure. So we've done things like this in the past. The most recent one I can remember in, in Young County is probably Timber Ridge Road. I think the road going in there, we helped the, the commissioner by buying the, the pipe, and then the county helped pour in the headwalls and provided the equipment and the labor to help to get that installed. And that's kind of what I'm, what I'm seeing the need here. So, we can't, we can't work on the city street or the county road, but we can provide materials under that program.
And are y'all increasing free?
Yes, sir.
So what do you think about this, Stacy?
Well, I've always offered help, all the way back, you know, twelve, thirteen years ago. I've had Ronnie Abbott down there and, and more recently, last two years ago, when Donnie started working, you know, I've had him down there. Told him the most economical way is to put a, just to put a headwall up there. It's pretty simple. It's not rocket science, but, uh, you know, if, if they would, if the city would put the headwall up there, you know, we're more willing to bring, uh, field dirt to, to backfill the, the dirt. Right now, it's, uh, eighteen foot wide, roadway's eighteen foot wide, but there is an additional six foot if you built a wall on the other side of the backfield. But, you know, it just goes up dead's end with three houses up there, so, you know, it's really don't need to be a interstate, but you need to do something to that headwall. And county's always offered, I've always offered the help in bringing back field, if they get the project started, see if they get the project started. I haven't been down in there to check the, uh, culverts, what the condition is on them, the current culverts. Are you thinking that it just needs to be replaced?
I believe so, just with the debris and the things that have just pushed through and over the past years with the floods that we've recently had. You know, in the past couple of years, we haven't had any in two years, but.
Yeah, we've been pretty fortunate, you know, it hasn't got any worse in the last twelve or fourteen years, you know, as far as the road surface, the road width. We've kind of kept it at, you know, eighteen foot, but, uh, when you go talking about replacing the whole, the whole location, you know, in November of twenty-one, I replaced one on another road and put three six-foot culverts in it with cement headwalls. And the pipe had gone up and cement's gone up, but, uh, back in twenty-one, it was fifty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, you know, that's kind of a round figure, you may have started sixty thousand dollars, but, you know, when you talk about the trac toe, the trac toes, uh, it's not the expensive part.
No, concrete's gonna be the expensive.
Sewer's gonna be there. You're gonna go back with it.
Yes, sir.
In the past, my recommendation was to put pipe in there and come up with sheet iron, you know, because it's on the headwall side.
To reinforce it and then just backfill it, but. I'm not opposed to that. I, I wouldn't imagine our council would be opposed to that either. Our benefit was just looking at the fact if we did do it the way the state would recommend it, they could be, it's able to be inspected by the state in the future from now on versus us maintaining it.
So doing it the way the state would want, what would, what would that require from the county?
Uh, probably the manpower and the esca, and the excavation of it.
Does the state inspect culvert bridges?
Well, they would inspect that bridge.
So once, once a structure's large enough to be classified as a bridge, eventually it'll get added onto our inventory in our inspection site.
Even with six-foot culvert?
Yeah.
I've done the same thing out here on Belt Road. I put in, it used to have two eight-foot culverts, and it had that big flood wash it away. I tried it. I went back with three eight-foot culverts, got with the guys at Wichita Bridge and Wichita Falls, we worked with that. Put the concrete headwall in. Next time something happens to it, it's on our deal, it's gonna be their bridge to stop at that point. That's a good thing about the state, they'll work with you.
Yes, sir.
They've got the, the, the knowledge and the workforce to be able to make things happen, so.
Yes, sir.
So y'all would supply the culverts to replace those that are there?
So we're gonna actually come up our rider program or you could get somewhere else?
That's what I'm talking about, is using the county's rider program, the county system.
And we've already started using on that district?
That's what we got. That's the program we've got, and as you all know, it.
I'm not sure what pipe looks like now, but, you know, Donnie, he's, he's, he's not there anymore. He was willing, you know, to have it started now, but, uh, I, I, I sure wouldn't go to expense to put the cement headwall on there without replacing the pipe. And that's the expensive part, but, you know, the cement.
What do you reckon?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
In the, in the short term, yes, the, the headwall needs to be addressed. The one on the Pisa, I believe, one of those washed. But I think the, the long-term or the intermediate-term consideration needs to be replacing that structure, and it's, it's not.
All culverts have to be replaced at some point, huh? Yeah. But it's a median road, three houses, one of them might not be there right now, but, uh, one of them's a safety void, it's a, and, uh, it's.
Is that on the way, you know, that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's.
And I know, I know the, I know, uh, his in-laws, they, they also all track them through there as well. That's, that's where it gets kind of sketchy for them, moving in and out with farm equipment.
I just thought you'd do a pretty good job of that.
It's a drop-off of the, of that bridge in there, yes, sir.
Yeah, it, it's not so bad, except right over the culvert, you know, it, it taped it off around, the banks taped it off, but it's probably six foot straight, it's probably twelve foot to the bottom.
We're, we're open for any ideas. I mean, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the grant writing offer.
Yeah, well, if you think, I mean, that, that doesn't not, doesn't have to be for this, it could be for anything.
Yes, sir.
We're still trying to figure out how to, I haven't, we haven't had any luck. I found a bunch of grants that were usable, but I haven't, I haven't had any luck yet with it, so, well, hopefully we'll keep it going. But as long as we have it, you guys fit with us, um, and, and you can use our grant writer.
Do, they have the research team who take contact to see what was out there, right, with our grant writer. We can sit, wouldn't.
Yeah.
Wouldn't tell them to look and see what is out there for it.
Is there enough?
I can, I can ask.
Deborah, does.
See what there is. Not, not this year. We still have left on our district wire, there's some counties that haven't taken full advantage of it yet, and I can.
Honzi, it's really a bridge, like I would think of the bridge.
No, sir, it's.
It's, it's like a culvert road repair.
Yes, sir.
Probably three sixes.
Twenty foot or twenty-four. Actually, it'd be thirty, it's a bit slow on that.
It'd be nice to be able to help Newcastle. It's the first time they've kind of asked us for anything, but if we've got it in our county, but, but like. I think that'd be a good use of that program. I was, I was saying, I mean, y'all, y'all are the road experts, but, I mean, this is the first time Newcastle's come and asked us for anything, and, um, it'd be nice if we could help them.
I've got, I've got an excavator. It's pretty simple.
Okay. Okay.
I furnish operator everything for it.
We'd be, we'd be glad to take that on if, if needed. Um, we can do more research on our end as well, though, but, I mean, I'd be more willing, I can call Deborah to see if there's any grants as well, see if she knows of any. If there is, I mean, we can bypass Grant Works and see if we can use the county to write the grant.
Uh, either way, I mean, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think this is a bad idea either, to go this direction.
You know, what he's, what he's offering, no, he is, he's the three pipes, and probably some help on the concrete would go a long ways. He's not talking that much to this manpower.
Yes, sir.
And here.
And we can all chip in all the third.
And all these stuff and whatever we do, help out.
Okay.
We got four road crews. To the rest.
We got three and a half.
Three and a half.
Short-handed.
Three and a half road crews.
You ever met?
But Scott's crying.
Yeah. Well, we sure do appreciate it.
You bet. You bet. Let's put our ass together and see.
Your honor, I would like to introduce the new mayor that's been taking my spot. This is Josh Bennett. He's from Newcastle, grew, grew up, went to high school there and graduated, and now he's gonna step in and volunteer for this, so.
That's exciting. So when do you take office?
Eighth, next month, I think, Tuesday.
We bet.
I think so.
Well, I thank y'all for your time, gentlemen.
You got it. Thank you. Appreciate what you've done for Newcastle.
She doing better?
She what?
She gonna be there this week?
Oh, yeah, we're just staying on the medicine, trying to get better. Everybody's healthy.
All right. We missed her the last game.
Yes, sir, I know.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Goodbye. Thank you. All right, let's move to item number seventeen. We have a ten a.m. open bid, open sealed bids for the purchase of a chiller system for the Young County Courthouse.
I received one bid in my office this week, and it was from James Lane, who we've, who has been repairing ours for a whole while now.
Is that Norman Dootson?
It is, and, um, he says. And I'm gonna make a copy of this. It says everything that they'll do. I was gonna see if he even said how long it would take to get it. The last time I talked to him, he thought within six months they could have it, so it would be in our new budget. Uh, the proposal is a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. You can make a copy and so y'all can look at everything involved on this. They don't have color.
They're that expensive?
I'll find each other.
There's four compressors in there.
The compressor, you know, we're gonna replace that one to get it through summer. It's twenty thousand dollars.
I, I'm just shocked with this, so.
Really, it's really good and bad. It's cheap, right? I'll be waiting till the winter and then it's. But I feel like we need to put that on the list or something, we didn't try to sell that, that part for some reason.
The, the ones we've replaced.
They won't give us any kind of credit on the use.
Of course, they would.
They would.
Which that don't make sense to me. I don't know, there'd be more of them out there using that same compressor. There are two of them being, this one will be very old and the one we replaced last year, which is not, it's not good yet.
It's pretty foreign.
It was requested.
Oh.
You put his charge in, precinct.
Yeah.
He's blacked out, being on the scene's black in front of you. I didn't call you a dog.
You're so sweet this morning.
I think he said smells like a dog.
Smells like a dog.
Does that have a lifetime warranty? Lifetime.
Women just laugh.
Well, there is a five-year compressor one, he wanted your part labeled one.
It's, I, I don't think we need to let them hold it all, because I'm gonna be using it for.
We can sell for scrap iron.
Yes, sir.
Make, make something of it. You know, we could probably put that stuff on Renee Bates. They have it on there all the time.
Why not try?
Try and see.
Especially the two newest compressors.
Put a minimum bid on, so I ask, like, we can sell this one, go.
And I can contact him and see, um, it doesn't say on there anymore. I didn't see what it said, how long it would take to get it. The last time I talked to him, he thought, uh, I think he thought six week, or six weeks, six months.
So, um, does this bid look good to everybody? Ben, I'd entertain, I'd entertain a motion that we, uh, accept this bid and then in, as part of this motion, um, sell the old chiller, try to put it on Renee Bates', and let's see, let's see what he does.
And we'll budget for this in the new budget.
We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley to be able to say it. Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a holdover, item number nine, a holdover from, from the last meeting, discuss and consider the fuel bid policy. Um, we've obviously had an issue about a month ago on a, ordering, with the sheriff's department ordering some, some fuel. Currently, it's my understanding is our policy is only to send it out to two local providers. Do we want to open it up to someone else?
No.
No? What's your opinion? What, what's your opinion, Stacy?
I mean, we're using county money, let's try to keep it somewhat in the county.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, they've done that for a purpose in the past. Uh, what did you find out? What are other counties doing?
They get bids, but like I said, I talked to Eastland, and, and she gets a bid for markup and transport thing. I'm like, you know, you can't actually bid the fuel because the price range is so. And they do get, everybody gets bids. We got none. So. We got no bids. When we asked for bids, only we got none. Yes, in December. So we, in December, you know, they said, well, we'll just call for bid of the day, like we have been doing, and they send the bids to my office, and, and then we get back with them and tell them that, um, but if they didn't respond within three hours, because they'll call us and tell us I called for fuel bids, if they didn't respond three hours, whoever we had bid from then called.
I suggest we can continue with what we're doing, calling the bids. If they don't respond in three hours, if somebody makes a mistake like they did on me, they're gonna have to come pull it, suck it back out. I mean, that, that would be the only way to handle that, if they done, delivered without turning in a bid first again. I mean, because once I've already called the other people and told them how you, they haven't given a bid, but they come in and deliver it anyway. That's what all this got so nasty. And if one of them doesn't want to participate, we just have to take the bid we get. I mean, that's the only way we can do it at this point. If we have to get bids, we just have to get bids, if everybody else is getting bids.
So, so are you recommending to go in and ask them for fuel for a bid?
I'll ask them. If they don't want to participate, I can't make them. I mean. So, what do y'all think?
I don't ever order fuel, so I don't, I don't really have a, you know, I, I guess I'm a little concerned that we don't have.
A competitive.
We don't have a competitive market. That's the only thing that I'm worried about. And to me, that's, that's concerning, that we don't have a competitive market.
Right.
I, my preference is always to do business in county. That is, that's the preference. But if you can't get a market in county, like James Lane's, James Lane's not in county.
No.
We have people in county that could probably su- supply the stuff, but James Lane's in Wichita Falls. So we, we, we do those.
But what bid we got, I mean, we do spend money outside the county. Um, who would we, but nobody else has gave it. Who else would we call that we would even represent?
Have you opened it up?
I'll tell you for the letter in the paper, add in the paper, anybody that wanted on the bid list. Request it.
And all this may need to be done at bid time. We've kind of already set the presidents in January by accepting it for the whole year. So I don't know at this point. We could change it right then until we do go out for bids again in December.
But we didn't have anyone bid on bids for the year.
No, that's true. That's true.
So, I don't think we're obligated to anything on that, but it was a failed process.
The only bid, bid on was rock, wasn't it?
Yes, and, and I had one county speaker, they were talking about some of this and purchasing, and they get rock bids. They accept every rock bid they get. And I, you know, I don't, because like with the one that's closer to you, but then, you know, Burkitt's always said, well, you didn't, because they do the crushing for them, so they're still on the money side of it. But what if it was a competitor? I mean, I, I don't know how you, I don't know.
Well, that's what makes it competitive, is having a competitor come in and do a bid.
So, if I remember, when we made the policy to pay bids within the county, there was three distributors at that time. There was All-Star, you know, Cat and Mutant, and Hall and Field. And that was one of the reasons that that was just too. And I don't know, I know only, I know All-Star, you know, they've got employees that live in ground, and it's, and it's loaded here in ground, but is it technically a Young County company? Where's their main headquarters at?
Alan? I'm not gonna talk about the fuel. I'm gonna talk about the business. Statute says if we go out and send out a bid for something, then we do not receive it. That needs to be fulfilled by our obligation.
As far as.
As far as that goes. At that point, you can do it as you want to. Now, if you put stipulations on top of that, then that makes it.
Just like on this, on this, if we hadn't gotten this bid, we'd probably just go out and get requests for purchase. Yeah.
So what do we want to do, guys? We're gonna be, someone's gonna need to buy fuel soon. We need to know what we want to do here. Are we content with how we've been doing it and just accept what happened is just a snafu? Or do we want to, uh, accept bids from the neighboring counties? And no, no action is? We just continue with what we have, so.
Could we put something in the paper and go ahead and ask if anybody would like to be put on the bid list at this point without getting them invited?
Out of camp?
Out of camp.
You're gonna change the policy of going out of camp for bids?
I think we should just leave it. No action for now and address it next, but here.
Send out bids for, let us run the county's fuel.
Y'all don't do that. I'm, I'm not the safer of it. You can do what you want to.
Well, I mean, how are they gonna compete anyway with just the transportation of it? I mean, they're not.
If you did, especially if you get delivery pricing.
Well, I mean, where, where Stacy gets bulk fuel, where he only orders twice a year, and I order about every two months. There's a big difference in what they can do cost-wise and delivery there.
Is that, is that because you look into tank space? Where Stacy has more tank space than you?
Yeah, he has a lot more tank space than I do. Yeah, I'm just glad to have the tank space I got, because I only had one tank, and I guess precinct one was running off clear fuel whenever I came into office.
Well, that's the, that's the commission results, and what side of things are you?
I didn't have a lot in my budget when I took office, so I had to get what I could afford.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion on, on item number nine? All right, we're gonna move on because with no action.
Continue, Mayor.
We'll continue as, as it is, but, you know, I think if we have a problem again, we need to probably address it.
Yes.
Say, we'll move to item number ten, which is, uh, discuss and consider a tax resale bid. The, a, a tax resale deed from Caseyville, for Caseyville Crossing Road, Graham, Texas. The bid amount was ten thousand, three hundred, no, the bid amount was ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. I think I have a typo on our agenda. Um, so this is Purdue Brandon. Um, it's four point two acres in abstract fifteen forty-one. They had a bid from, um, Tim Mathis. Do we have a motion to approve the sale? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crispell. All in favor of approving the sale? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, item number eleven, discuss and consider a soil and water stewardship week proclamation for the week of April twenty-eighth through May fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll read the proclimate, the proposed proclamation. Whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with our daily sustenance, I always have a problem with that word. And whereas effective conservation practices have helped provide us with a rich standard of living. And whereas our security depends upon healthy soil, soil and clean water. And whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources. Therefore, I do, I do hereby proclaim this week of April twenty-eighth through May fifth as Soil and Water Stewardship Week. What y'all think? Sounds good to me. We have a motion to accept this proclamation. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Second from Commissioner Shuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I gotta get a picture of that, too.
Okay. You want to sign it? Or do you, you want to all sign it?
No, yeah, you should, you should, just you sign it.
Okay. Yeah, it is. And do you want to take a picture of this real quick? Or, uh, is a copy of this?
I'm gonna take off and celebrate.
Well, we don't.
Our birthday is in the middle of it.
Yesterday was April twenty.
Thank you. Someone was telling me about Earth Day being today.
I'm listening.
Listening. Yeah, exactly.
What would we do without it?
Without Earth Day?
Yeah, without Earth.
It won't be long, we'll be celebrating Mars Day.
No, no, no. What's that, what's, uh, what's that, uh, what's the moon around? Is it Saturn, the, uh, Titan? The one that, that they've got pictures of, and it's blue? It's like, uh, water and, it looks like Earth. You got it, Commissioner Wiley? All right. All right, now we move to the final. Item number twelve, discuss and consider auction bids on a twenty twenty-one Mack truck through Renee Bates' auction site. Commissioner Wiley?
Put it on there with a hundred and five thousand dollar minimum bid. And received no bid.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go back and we're gonna try to get a deal and see what it's.
Try to get deals.
We want to close out at nine o'clock on May thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Okay, you making a motion to do that? To, to put that on the auction site? Get a, get a deal at the auction site?
Yes, sir.
All right, so a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number fourteen. Discuss and consider a lease purchase of a twenty twenty-five Mack truck through First National Bank, Stewart Cobb. Commissioner Wiley?
On thirteen.
See, there's two thousand and one.
The reminder to.
Reminder.
Did I skip? Oh. Well, we're doing fourteen, and we'll go back to thirteen. So.
What I did was, is I, I do that every, for a year. Like, I have one of my twenty twenty-fives that came in and already received it. And we need to go through that. Whenever I get off of this sub truck, although it always happened there also, it's been locked in there a lot of years.
So, a purchase. Item thirteen is actually the truck we sell on down twelve.
No, item thirteen is one that I am keeping. And replacing with another one. I've got a two thousand and one Mack that I'm replacing.
Okay, so I, I made a mistake. I did, I, we had fourteen, so we're talking about the lease purchase of a twenty twenty-five Mack truck.
Yes.
Um, and you're making a motion, and you're gonna to finance that through First National Bank?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
And I don't have this contract yet, but I will be getting it, and so it's approved, and then I guess we can get it signed and ratified on the next.
Do we need to do something different about that fire truck, fire service truck that we talked about? The new one we found?
Yeah, we might go look at that one that you found that's ready to go. It's, it's a little bit higher than what we.
The one we've been waiting on, Cheryl, they hadn't got a title for it yet, and he hadn't been able to do the work because he's been stuck down in Houston. But they have another one, it's the exact same truck, it's indicator, he's got the title. They've already done all the services, ready to roll, but it's five thousand dollars worth. So it's fifty instead of forty-five.
Do we have any money?
Because.
We all have contingency money, but I don't have any emergency money.
We didn't put a lot of money in emergency.
We haven't used a lot, but then, you know, we put your money in there.
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't put any kind of extra money. I don't, I don't remember putting any extra money in.
I was gonna say, well, what did we put in there for a truck?
Forty-five.
Almost, almost two.
Almost two.
Well, we're getting fire season pretty quick, too. If you don't know when, it's gonna be able to get that other one going. The dozer will be ready before the trucks are in a haul if we don't.
Let me see what we have left up there and see if we come up with another. I've been married that, hey, with you, we had fifty. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
If we have to, we have to do with the contingency.
Well, any, any money in emergency hand?
Well, I tell you one thing, I took the one that I bought, and the first thing we need to do when we get them is take them up to Rutgers. And have them, uh, turn it up and get that computer, because they've got a code for the company that they were done with, which was Swamper Tech. But that code, Rutgers has a way to go around it to where they can be turned up. If you don't have that factor code, you can't do it.
So what model is this one that?
It's the exact same truck.
Twenty thirteen.
And it still has hardly any miles.
Yeah, it's twenty thousand miles.
Let me see.
Um, I know we gotta get back up to thirteen, but this should have gone in public comments, but tonight we're having, um, at NCTC, we're having sixty-six of our county firefighters come for a WUU training, which is, um, basically the interface between wildfires and, and cities and structures. And so, uh, we have sixty-six guys coming, and Texas Forest Service is putting on the, uh, putting on the training, and I'm excited. I'm excited that the, the fire department, they're, they're seeing genuinely excited about it.
Already there.
Good.
All right, so we'll back up to number thirteen, and my apologies for taking this out of order. Discuss and consider refinancing a twenty twenty-one Mack truck through First National Bank with Stewart Cobb. This is Commissioner Wiley's item.
What I'm doing is, is I've got one, a truck, it's a two thousand and one model that I've got underneath my. Trying to look in the haul and brush and everything, and, uh, it's getting a little late, so I'm gonna get it to be somebody else's. So, what I'm gonna do is, I've already got this other one up there at Max, and I had them put a wet kit on it, just by that it installed, and they were laying there in guilt. I want to replace that truck with this truck. And go from there. And whatever proceeds I get off of that twenty twenty, two thousand and one model, we'll go toward this one.
I'll pay it off.
You never know. You never know.
All right, do we have a motion to, uh, um, are you making a motion? Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
And again, I don't have this contract either, but if, when we get them, should be probably this week. If I get you to sign it, then we'll ratify it on the next commissioner's court.
All right, we'll move to item number fifteen. Discuss and consider a request for sealed bids on a twenty twenty-one John Deere six seven zero GP motor grader presented by Commissioner Rogers.
Um, back about eight, eight or ten months ago, we, uh, approved, uh, to buy a John Deere replaced, I mean, a Caterpillar replaced this twenty twenty-one John Deere. Just gonna go, but I've got a trading number on that contract, but I'm just gonna put it out there to see if I can get any more from outside companies to trade it back to the one. It's getting praised by RDO and, uh, One Cat for sure. And then we can ask Marcia to send out some bid letters and just see if there's any interest in it. Try to get more money than what's actually offered through the contract that's already been through the court. So, uh, uh, we sat down and come up with some dates. And we're gonna, they need to be in the office late at ten, four P.M., and we're gonna open them on the thirteenth at ten a.m.
And is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers and a second from Commissioner Crispell. More money is always a good thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And then this is my item. Um, item number sixteen, discuss and consider a change in the Helen Farabee Center's invoice for support contributions per our M O A for this week year two thousand and twenty-four. So we had an agreement with Helen Farabee to pay down a certain amount for the year. And during the year, they dropped a significant portion of their I D D services, um, which displaced some citizens who were using that and relying on that on a daily basis. Well, we heard from, from some of those parents, and they've contracted with the Arc in Wichita Falls, and they're gonna start a new program, and they're purchasing the old modern way building, um, just kind of off of where the library is, just north of where the library is. So I was talking to Helen Farabee, and they sent us their bill, and I, I didn't think that it was right for them to bill us, because we had, in our, in our M O A, we have, um, a defined amount for each service category, including I D D services. And so what we kind of verbally agreed, verbally, or what we kind of agreed to subject to commissioner's court's approval, is that they would, um, decrease the amount they were charging us for I D D services. Uh, they would basically only charge us half of that. Um, so they were charging us eight thousand dollars for I D D services. So this invoice here is reduced, and they're only charging us four thousand dollars for the I D D services. And then my thought is, we could take that extra four thousand dollars and, and contribute it to the, the group that's, that's contracting with the Arc, and they can use it for, just put that in their operational budget. And then obviously, when we renew that Helen Farabee contract, we'll probably need to address and see really how, how much, how many, how much I D D services we're getting from them under their, kind of their new policy, but, um.
Should I get a little bit of it to go? Like the equipment services, all together?
No, they're, they're still doing I D D services. What they've stopped is their day half service, which is the, the, the kind of the, well, basically you would, you would drop your kid off in the morning and pick him up in the afternoon and then they would um work with them the entire day.
This is grown kids that are in a work program that are disciplined.
So are they bad?
They are, I believe they're in contract on that modern way building. It's um, they're, they're trying to raise three hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, this is a drop in the bucket. Um, cause but, but I figured, you know, anything's better than nothing.
We're still using Helen Farabee all or court stuff?
We are. And you know, Helen Farabee, um Helen Farabee, we use Helen Farabee a lot. Um, I Sheriff Badcock, um, that's where he gets most of his resources. So um, this motion is really just to accept um accept a reduced invoice from Helen Farabee and it's reduced, it's, it's the original I D D amount that we had agreed with them was eight thousand dollars. So this has four thousand dollars for that. And then in the future, uh, this has nothing to do with this motion, but in the future I would be very supportive of contributing that four thousand dollars to the, to the new day half facility that they're putting together. But, okay, so you're, you're making a motion to accept the change in the invoice from Helen Farabee. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Um, all right, now we get to move. And it's early. We headed down for eleven o'clock. The Texas, the, so this is actually, this is a big deal. So the Texas Association of Counties is here to shower flowers and praise among Marcia for her work in obtaining her third, her three time, three time, three time safety award. So um, Steve, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you guys for uh being gracious enough to have us today. Uh, if I haven't met you guys, I've been in the position for about a year as your risk control consultant for this area. And uh I've worked with, with Marcia a little bit over the year. We've been trying to get a, some safety trainings off the books for this year so that we can continue uh as part of the requirements for receiving the award next year. But uh, the safety achievement award, we actually presented them at C M R C and I believe we had Marcia come up and accept it for the county. So what it is, is we give this award out, you have to have certain policies in place, which uh the court has adopted certain safety policies and uh do a certain amount of training for your, with your employees. Since I work with the Roman Bridge, but Rita is also here, the H R consultant. So we just wanted to come by and and just do a formal uh presentation and say thank you for allowing us to come in and do the safety training and thank you for, you know, considering safety every day and being one of those safe counties that does everything that you can to make sure that your employees get home safe every day. So um, that's my job is to put our claim side out of business. I say that, uh, you know, if the the less mortgage complaints they get, the better it is for the pool as a whole and um just helps us with maintaining the affordability of it. So it just looks really good for the county. And so if any of you want to come up and shake my hand, we can do a picture in front of it. I think Rita will take some pictures and uh Marcia can do it next year again.
So I also want to brag on Marcia. So Marcia's, Marcia's our leader on this.
Yes.
And there's two hundred and fifty four counties in Texas and y'all gave twenty one of those awards out.
Yes, sir. So a little bit less than ten percent.
That's, that's impressive. So thank you for all your hard work and we appreciate you, Marcia.
Safety something.
Safety something. Let's get our little pictures. Let's do it.
Let's hop along and get around here.
You know, you knew we were gonna take pictures. That's why you wore the design.
You're right, but I didn't wear.
Y'all back in notes that this is an off the job accident.
Well, that was going to be my, it's like, okay.
Yeah, this happened at home. Yeah, you know what? The other approaches is the same. I wish we had a, we had a neck brace.
Oh, no.
Be safe, Judge. Be safe. Marcia, are you gonna get the picture also?
Come on, Marcia.
She needs a big rat in the middle. Hold it over there.
She needs a whole bit of it.
Thank you, Stacy. I'll send you the picture. Okay.
This is the record pictures we've ever had for the Commissioner's Court.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for coming.
What are y'all taking tonight?
This program, this safety one.
Yeah, it was just uh, I, I don't know if y'all have my cards. I've got some in the truck. I'll leave it at that in Marcia's office. And if you get a chance, you just email me what they did and how many people were there because we don't have to obviously do all the training for you. So if y'all do it outside, it just definitely works. So just uh, I'll leave my card.
This was not done.
You can email it out and I'll make sure I give it out.
I would have not let him all that flatter.
When you apply for it again after the year.
Although we've threatened to push it.
I need, I need a safety program. Don't, don't we still, we, we're acting up. Your germs. No. We gotta talk about burn ban. Right, if you remember. Are we, are we ready for the burn ban?
All right, item number um nineteen, discuss and consider burn restrictions.
With this ring we've got, we are making lots of fuel for life in this summer.
Yeah.
And uh, so, but at this point in time, I feel like it's great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna claim you're gonna have a mild summer and wet.
That's not what the professionals say.
Not what you're saying.
Well, they also said we.
The coldest, right? Coldest wet is winter ever.
Yeah. All right, so I'm hearing no action.
No action.
Um, do we have anyone who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Motion, motion, second. All in favor? Wiley, Scott.
And Stacy.
All right, I'm in the yard.
And Stacy.
All right, so.
Hold it right here.
Okay.
Next time they say give them more than that.
All right. Good meat. Good job. Well done.
We'll find that.
Okay. I'll come to you.
Oh, Jimmy, your camera's, how light is this? Yes. If you want to stand back there, Judge, I'll come back there.
Is that wrong? Yes.
I'm Stacy. Y'all get right here in the middle and you get, sorry Judge, but it's really.
I might get a little bit of that.
You need to see it, yeah. Okay, y'all ready?
Jeans. All right, designer jeans.
Quitting. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And all people to notice in the morning.
So Judge, actually, I'm just gonna clarify on the, on the bridge. I don't think he ought to be official action. Was it kind of just like they're gonna research?
There is, there is no action.
Okay.
So basically, they're gonna see what we can do to help. There, I'm gonna go borrow some grants.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought. I was like, you didn't take a motion.
The answer is gonna be, we're gonna help.
Right.
It's just we gotta figure out how, how to help.
Okay.
What's probably gonna happen is it'll be a little bit from all four precincts. Probably come in and contribute a little bit to it.
For sure. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
But, yeah, they're, they're gonna, it's gonna happen. They'll know how, yes, but.
Would you finish the number that we talked about the other day?
How to tell the uh, okay, the department to talk to you.
Okay.
They're there. We have people in the whole ground.
Okay. Well, we're dragging the die and then we'll get back up there and finish the coves and stuff.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
So gonna call if you need my water truck?
Yes, whenever you get ready.
Should be ready. Got to replace some of them out.
You know, she's struck too.
Yeah, but it ain't turned up yet.
Do you wanna? I guess we put that on the agenda or are they getting that truck or?
I think it was just about thousand dollars. Surely it's.
I mean.
It, it hit the bid mark. It actually hits a bid mark.
Five thousand, fifty thousand is the bid mark. That's the only, if you could get him to take forty nine ninety five out of it for it, they would believe a little bit more. Because if that's the case, we can.
We have to wait one or two weeks to do it. They're gonna.
Well. He's gonna have to give, we're gonna have to be able to get it lower, lower than fifty thousand.
And we're gonna have to buy out for a full bid on it.
That's not a problem.
All right, I'll talk to Cheryl and see what she says.
See, see what, see, if you can get him to take the money down some, surely he can do with that five dollars.
Yeah.
Sure.
But do we gotta include the tax in that?
No tax.
We have to, okay, that makes it easy.
No tax.
I just gotta think tax was, it's a one, if we gotta include tax, that bumps it back up or? We don't.
No tax.
No. I'm gonna go in here and sand all them papers I didn't get to before. I had to take a pickup down to Skidmore this morning, make them adjusters.
You'll give them a picture?
Well, the adjuster, I looked at him and I said, well, what do you think? He says, take a tunnel if you're supposed to have it there today. He said, uh, they ain't gonna, he said, as much as these pickups are valued at anymore, he said, they ain't gonna.
They ain't gonna, they ain't totally.
He said, frame ain't bent, suspension ain't hurt. Motor ain't hurt if you get it done.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Yeah, the bridge.
Down there.
Do you want to? That thing has a real piece of work. On what they're talking about, the operating.
Just like, no, that's still on. As soon as Marcia gets back, I'll have her turn it off. I, I saw you on the sprinkler.
Oh.
Harley's not here, so as soon as Marcia gets back from Prost Street, I'll have her turn it on.
Okay. That bridge, we'll dig it there one day. That's what we did on those three jobs. We got a dig track though. Pull them out, put them back in, splice them in. Clean it out. And it wasn't very critical. I guess this is, that you got down just like that. That's the chief project that's over. But it was still. For that, thirty six.
That's pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
We, we got a shore and phone.
I'm glad there's something I need to do any taxes. I don't have what you got for me. I can include all the branches. Like the maintenance roads.
They don't have any maintenance roads?
No, they don't even have. No, they don't even have.
She's up the bridge. That, uh... Okay. (cough) Sorry.
Oh, did you put, you mean everything?
Yeah.
You put, uh, May fourth, the, 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 uh...
Yeah, that's how March, they have the tent, so she walk across street, it's hanging in the... All right.
Oh, good.
May fourth. Is this the first time we've done this on the square?
Yeah.
And I need to add... Is this for the whole lawn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, I'm there, they're gonna, they're taking the whole square over.
Okay.
You wait, wait, so take one, you talk.
The distance association, is that what they start to call it again?
Oh, that's a secret of mine, the grand, you know, the, so, the, you know, secret of my, uh, so, right now, I'm...
Okay.
And then, plant a lot off, I'm, for, for...
About thirty-one, sixty-one. Is that now? There you go.
Can I borrow you for a second, Tim? Is it?
Yeah, Martha, when she gets back, probably, or whatever.
Okay. Um, okay. Everything out there can be thrown away now.
And they don't want us to close about May on Friday. Oh, that haunts me. Uh, John started to take Maverick back to, uh, get his arm x-rayed. And, uh, is this Friday? She asked me if I could be creative. Wanna take the mayor off?
Yeah. This Friday?
Yes.
All right. So, that's good, break down to it.
Yeah, they're, they're not here, so...
Yeah.
Yes, certainly, they've got my man.
I know. So, yeah, that's, uh, that's a really good day, that's, that's a good day. I like that you're taking, you know...
I just take photos in the office. I just take looks in the office.
Well... You got a nap?
Hello? Only one half a day for a radio. We're one and a half people.
I, I... I feel like all of you. I'm really, I'm really calm now. That's all. This is April.
Is that suffering?
Uh...
Is that suffering because of this?
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm so far... So, I come in on weekends, you know, Friday, Friday over there.
You're not here, you're, I mean, you're gone, probably the weekends. We gotta make sure we, we, we had the mayor say... You know, I remember, there you go.
Yeah.
Do you know where the name is?
They all said their name, Honsey.
Honsey. Oh, okay, I was looking down, I'm gonna think that way.
All right, I'm gonna go, go over there. Uh, I've been here for the rest of the day, right? Okay. Probably have something to do with, uh, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm still, it's all, we have a busy afternoon tomorrow, I think.
We have, we have the twenty-third one o'clock conference, from three to eight, two o'clock, four.
What's the one o'clock conference?
The conference, all, we said, oh. Okay, so, pro eight, pro eight, one three two, G three, before you have...
The, the, the conference, okay, and I had, uh, so that's gonna be over there. Okay. Yeah, we can, we have, I wanna do those, pro eight, it's like, the game comes this person, it's like, that, uh...
Application to pro eight, and then application, uh, where all those people are. There's a big, big, uh, pro eight.
Yeah. Dennis Keatt, that was the name last time. Dennis Keatt.
Uh, I'll say it's me.
I said it, uh, that I do.
I would.
Okay.